I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 26, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are present this evening in our new school board meeting room located at the Northfield Public Schools District Offices, formerly Longfellow School. In accordance with Governor Wal's Stay Safe Plan, this room has been set up in accordance with the plan's social distancing guidelines. In addition, all those present at the meeting are wearing face coverings. Tonight, we also welcome students from the District Youth Council and their advisor, Malia Fallon. Attending tonight's board meeting via teleconference are Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Joel Lear, Principal, Northfield High School, and Joel Osen, Activities Director, Northfield High School. This meeting is open to the public via live stream. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, this evening, we had an addition to items for discussion on our reports with a report about an agreement between Area Learning Center and the Adult Basic Education Program for a 21 and older diploma. I'll be sharing that. We also have an additional committee report. We have a gift agreement, appointments, increase, decrease, change in positions, a leave of absence, some retirements, and information about a senior ceremony. So that's the table file for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented, moved by Jeff? Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that follow the district's policy regarding public comment would be read now. However, we have no public comment submissions. We'll move on now to announcements and recognitions. And tonight, we have a special opportunity to recognize the work of our District Youth Council seniors. So I would like to begin that presentation. So I will start, and then we will have the seniors come up. Tonight, we are pleased to honor our District Youth Council seniors for their incredible work. The DYC was formed as an advisory council to assist the district in providing the important student voice. The council is made up of 16 students selected through an application process and approved by the school board. Members serve on nine district committees and regularly attend school board meetings to keep abreast of current issues. In addition, this year's DYC had their own subcommittees focused on equity and inclusion, communications and connections, and well-being. At their presentation to the board this past fall, they highlighted the work they continue to do despite the challenges of Zoom meetings. The board was impressed with their efforts to thank the district's child nutrition workers and bus drivers for their work in preparing and delivering meals during distance learning. As a school board liaison to the council, I've had the privilege of witnessing them in action. I come away from our meetings impressed with the passion and enthusiasm they have for their projects. Most importantly, however, was how well they worked together, how supportive they are of each other, and how they freely acknowledge and appreciate the work of their fellow members. Thank you, seniors, for your leadership service and dedication to amplifying youth voice for our district. We also wanted to thank Malia Fallon, the DYC advisor, for her invaluable guidance and support she provides to students. We are grateful to Malia and to Zach Pruitt and Healthy Community Initiative for the support of the Youth on Boards program. This program places close to 90 students on the city of Northfield's various boards and commissions. So I will now have the opportunity to recognize each senior individually. Please hold your applause until the end. And I can say it's much more fun to be handing them their certificates versus putting them in the mail that we had to do last year. So this is really fun. So our first senior we'll recognize is Wendy Bolen. Wendy has spent three years on the District Youth Council. Her subcommittees have been diversity, equity, and inclusion, and her district committee was finance advisory and Northfield Forward. I remember one finance advisory meeting we met, it was pretty complex. Questions, of course, around school finance, which we all know is complex. And Wendy cut right to the bottom line and asked just this really excellent question. So always demonstrating how it's important and valuable the students are to our work. And she's also part of Northfield Forward. Wendy's future plans are she's excited to be going to Cornell University and majoring in food science. And some highlights for her of District Youth Council work was the 2019 Youth Data Summit and the School Board Brunch that was hosted by DYC for school board members, and we all recall how much fun that day was. So Wendy, we congratulate you and thank you for your incredible work. Hey, our next on the list is Erica Lowe. Erica has, this is her first year on District Youth Council, but has done incredible work on the diversity, or I'm sorry, the Connections and Communications Subcommittee. She was also on the district's Finance Advisory Committee, excuse me, Facilities. Erica is excited to be going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison and studying biomedical engineering. And I know it was the first, her first choice for college, so it's even more exciting when you get your first choice. Erica had some really insightful comments about her work and working with others to connect students with administrators. So she really enjoyed just being able to reach out to other students in her work on DYC. So Erica, thank you for your work. Let me check here that, yes. Thank you. We also next would like to honor Nick Lopez. Welcome, Nick. Nick has been on the District Youth Council for one year. He was a part of the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee and worked on the Policy Committee for the District. So we all know the incredible work that our students have helped us do on the Policy Committee. Nick is excited to be heading to North Dakota State to study exercise science. And similar to Erica, the most highlight for his work on DYC has been connecting and working with fellow students. So Nick, we thank you for your work. And we, of course, wish you all the best. Thank you, Nick. We'd like to recognize next Michael Malika. Michael Malika has been on District Youth Council for three years. He currently is co-chair along with Chloe Roska this year. And he was on the Equity and Inclusion and Diversity Subcommittee for DYC. I think he holds a record for the number of district committees he's on. Michael is on Finance Advisory, Facilities Advisory, and the District Equity Committee. Michael is heading to the University of Minnesota Twin Cities in the College of Design and will be studying retail merchandising. And highlight for Michael was the 2019 Data Summit. And as we all know, there was this incredible logo for the summit, and that was designed by Michael. So we know Michael has a great future in design. And Michael was also one of the students that traveled with the board and Schools for Equity and Education to the Capitol in 2019. And that was just a really incredible day to see our students interacting with our legislators. So thank you, Michael. Is that right? All right. Next, Brown is here. We'll give her a chance to walk up. So we welcome Brown McDermott. She has been on District Youth Council for two years. She has spent time on the subcommittees and worked on mental health and student well-being. Her district committees are Finance Advisory and the Wellness Committee. Brown has some decisions to make. She is committed to majoring in biomedical science and wants to go to medical school and study abroad before college, but still considering the Rochester Institute of Technology, Pacific Lutheran, or Luther. So she has some decisions to make before decision day. Brown had some really insightful comments about highlights and working for DYC. On the DYC, she said she has enjoyed learning more about the workings of the school and how many contribute in their own way. She is appreciative of being able to contribute in a meaningful way and believes it's important to have youth representative. And she was very grateful for the opportunity she's had as a member of the District Youth Council. So congratulations and thank you for your work, Brown. Good luck with that college decision. It sounds like you have some great choices. So we had three students who weren't able to make it tonight, but I do want to talk about them. Dylan Dietz has been on the DYC for two years. He was part of Connections and Communications Subcommittee and Northfield Board as a district. His plans are to attend University of Northwestern in St. Paul and major in nursing, and he'll be playing football in the cross for them. And he remembers, as a highlight, the 2019 Capitol Visit with the school board members and Schools for Equity and Education. The other student not able to be here is Anders Ripley. He was a part of the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee and the Finance Advisory District Committee. His plans are to attend Colorado College. And the highlight of his work on DYC was working on the land acknowledgement statement. And our last student is Chloe Roska, who served as co-chair along with Michael this year and was part of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee and served on Northfield Forward and the District Equity Committee. Chloe's future plans are to attend Luther College and major in global health or political science and to play softball for Luther. Highlights for Chloe was emceeing the Data Summit, and we know she did an amazing job as an emcee and hearing a range of opinions and ideas that came forth that morning for those students. And what's probably the most important highlight for her was a number of friendships she made and the connections that she continues to have with the students she met that day in that really excellent data summit. So I think I know that the entire board joins me in a round of applause and congratulations for all your work and your efforts. So we can move on. Dr. Hillman, if you have any other announcements and recognitions for this evening?
Yes, I have two this evening. First, we are very fortunate to have had two of our school, two members of our school staff recognized this year by the University of Wisconsin River Falls. So I'm proud to announce tonight that Keri Duba has been recognized as the 20, as one of the 2021 University of Wisconsin at River Falls Douglas K. Smith Outstanding School Psychology Alumni. The award recognizes leadership, service, and other contributions to the field of school psychology and education. Keri has frequently contributed her time for the field-based supervision of new professionals, teaching graduate courses at River Falls, advocacy for her community and schools, support for colleague growth, and thoughtful and measured leadership to so many. Keri is also a champion of social justice, advocating tirelessly for BIPOC and LGBTQ+ persons, and we congratulate Keri on this wonderful honor. Great to have her as an outstanding alumni from UW River Falls. And anyone who knows Keri, it's not a shock that she is an outstanding alumni. So great job, Keri Duba. We also want to recognize the Northfield High School State Champion Knowledge Bowl Team members. So these students were part of the team that won the state Knowledge Bowl Championship. But as you know, we've got kind of a juggernaut going there routinely, putting multiple teams in the section championships and moving on to state. So the members of this year's state champion team are Colin Thomas Green, Saxon Eggy, Andrew Ryden, Wyatt Barber, Max Casson, Grace Casson, Piper Morning, Julian Brunel, Owen Riley, James Shuffleton. And we want to congratulate their coaches, Michelle Soniga and Ellen Muha. Congratulations to the Northfield High School State Champion Knowledge Bowl Team.
Awesome. All right. Is there anything any board members would like to add? All right. Well, we will move on now to our first presentation. We welcome Northfield High School Principal Joel Lear and Activities Director Joel Osen. And they will present the three finalists for the Raider mascot redesign. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and I will speak on behalf of Joel. Actually, Joel had a family item that pulled him away this evening. So he sends his regrets, but I made sure to brief him on the comments I would make, so his words were not left unsaid. But I want to thank you, members of the board and Dr. Hillman, for this opportunity to share kind of the results of our labors as a logo refresh committee. Dr. Hillman, do I have share rights now?
You should.
Okay. I will go ahead and do that. All right. So just as a quick reminder of the process, back last fall, the board's action directed us to form a committee and to request among our stakeholders, our parents, students, and alums, as well as community members, ideas for a logo refresh. We collected about 21 total that we brought before a group of students, staff, parents, alums. It's a cross-section of our school and local community that I feel within the confines of a pretty limited group of people were able to represent as many stakeholders as we possibly could. So we were pleased with not only the number, but also the representation that served on that group. And so the process was a bit of a back and forth. Once the committee looked at those designs, they essentially established a series of concept preferences. So rather than looking at necessarily the 21 logos that were submitted as part of the process, looking at components of those logos to say what pieces can be combined, which pieces were important. If you remember, as a board, you had asked that we pursue something that looked to be as many of these as possible, that it be easy to reproduce, that it be gender neutral, that it be race neutral, that it be kind of representative of what it means to be a raider and focusing in on the bank raid more than the previous logo did. So with that, I'm just going to share the names of the committee members. So this was the group that served on the committee. We met three times over the course of the last couple of months to review. And so I mentioned the process of back and forth. So we took those concepts. And NUGER Communications representatives from NUGER Communications received those from the committee and then put together some prototypes of logos based on that feedback. Those initial first drafts were designed to be first drafts and functioned that way. And so Joel and I brought those drafts back to, back to the original committee, and we reviewed them from two standpoints. One, that, you know, how accurately those concepts that we had talked about were important from the first conversation were represented in those drafts. And then what changes, if any, were we hoping to make? And those conversations over the next two meetings were substantive. And the folks at NUGER were very cooperative in terms of their ability to kind of receive that, in some cases very detailed, in some cases very picky. But we really felt that that process was part of what allowed us to get to this point tonight where we can share these, these designs with you. So what we have is representative of those multiple conversations come together in, in three designs, essentially. You will see more than three pictures in the coming moments. And I will tell you that the first three are independent of one another. The last two you will see is a very obvious connection that the first one is a standalone, the second and the third are connected to the fourth and fifth. And I'll get to that in one second. But I did just want to share that the order of the first three, the order of these three logos is in priority order from the committee. So they're not presented to you at random. They are presented in the order of preference that that committee determined prior to moving them forward to the board for review and subsequent vote. So without further ado, I will share the logos. And this is logo number one. And I think just for the purpose of summarizing the conversation that the committee members had, I will show you all of them, and then I will work my way back through them a little more briefly so they can share those comments with you. So again, number one. Number two. And number three. So all three, obviously distinct, similar in certain ways, different in others. The last two illustrations I want to show you is that what NUGER did was essentially create a twologo package of each of these horse and rider combinations. So that you could actually, this is going to sound kind of graphic, but you could remove the head and make it a logo in and of itself. So I will just flashback to this one, the second and the third, and then you will see what I mean, that they essentially represented the logo as a separate entity with just the head like that first front-facing logo. And then the head of the second. And so what the folks at NUGER talked about was you could, you could essentially, you could have a single logo that is more than one logo and design a system where, where, say, for example, on a T-shirt, perhaps you would go with a complete horse and rider. And perhaps on the logo of a hat or the shoulder of a hockey sweater or a helmet, something less detailed and something rounder, if you will. All right. So I will just kind of talk you through a general summary of the conversations that we had regarding these and how we ended up at them being in this particular order of priority. And then I will certainly open it up to questions. So there were a couple of features about this that stood out for our committee. First of all, the committee felt that this was representative of the board's request to keep things gender neutral and race neutral. It is not a discernible gender or a discernible race. You'll notice that the horse people, so the logo person in this example, in this example, and then obviously in this are all three wearing bandanas. This first one is the only one wearing it below their face. And so the committee thought that that was important for two reasons. One, that the true spirit of a bandana over the face, at least in terms of how we represent in logos and such, is that if it's over the face, you're covering your face like you are a bandit. Whereas to be representative of the townspeople who defended the bank against the Jesse James gang, the committee believed that to have the bandana below the neck, or excuse me, below the chin, was more representative of a factual account of our community history. There were, this particular logo underwent some iterations that sharpened, actually, I just like to say this because I think it's funny, but made the hat look meaner. If I showed you the original draft, you would actually say, you're right, it looks kind of meaner or more ominous because it was sharpened. There were places where it was rounded. One of the pieces that we've talked about bringing back to NUGER for this piece is just perhaps to de-emphasize the size of the neckerchief. But again, the gender neutrality, the race neutrality, and then a little bit of a kind of a mystery, if you will, of who's behind the hat, who's behind the neckerchief. And then wanting to incorporate the raider N into the logo that could then be lifted off and be used in other components of our Raider Nation decorating. So again, that was kind of put us at priority one. This one was priority two. And I'm going to distinguish between this one and this next one on a couple of bases. And I'm going to toggle back and forth just so you can see them. One, the committee really believed that this also kind of kept the spirit of the race and gender neutrality a little more than this third one, which the committee really deemed was pretty masculine and also particularly right around the eye, very specific in terms of its race, the depiction of its race. Obviously, when you're talking about a drawing, those things can be up for interpretation. They can also be up for discussion about, is it meant to look like all of our students and our community members? Or is it meant to represent them in theme or in idea? So certainly, those were all conversations that we had. The committee in general, while there were people who liked the horse and rider, in general, if I had to say what is, was the general consensus of the committee was that they, they were less preferential to the riders on the, to the raider on the horse in the second and third images than they were specific to where it is just representative of the human in the logo. With this, with all three, actually, all three are, we have been told by professional consultants that they are easy enough to reproduce in whether it be screen print or embroidery. We did also have, one of the discussions that put this as preference one was that it was indeed a little simpler, a logo, and perhaps a little more easy to produce than the complexity of the other two. Also, I did want the board to know, as a simplification of the process, given that we are maroon and gold, I'm sharing each of the logos with you in those two colors. There are some, there's a rendering of the second and the third, so this one and this one that I would describe as multicolor, where some grays, some blacks, and other colors are mixed in. They flush out the color of the designs a little bit. They are also more expensive to produce. So if you think about the volume of production that's going to be involved in transferring our, all of our materials to a new refreshed logo, there is going to be a significant difference in cost when you start talking about multiple colors above and beyond two. So for the sake of this presentation, we shared what they would look like in the maroon and gold. Also, a personal note, also a note about color. There are actually identified pantone colors for the maroon and gold for Northfield High School. I did not verify whether or not these were those colors. So, you know, I ask you to consider the designs, but not necessarily that these are specific, the specific two pantone colors that are our school district, or excuse me, our logo has historically been. With that, I will open it up to comments or questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Joel. So a lot to absorb, some exciting looks. Anxious to hear board members' comments and questions. You want to take a few minutes to gather your thoughts? There's a lot to review. Corey?
Joel, I'm curious about the committee feedback. Was it unanimous for the prioritization of this order? Was everybody on board with number one?
Yeah, great question, Corey. Thank you for asking that. I would say that, I'm going to say no. I'm hesitating because our committee really, it really wasn't about saying, I like this one best, this one best, this one best. There was a lot of discussion about people who liked all three. And I would say that while short of unanimous, I would say that the full committee was very comfortable living with that as being first priority. But I will say that I think that in general, while we prioritize them in order for some specific reasons, there was a lot of discussion about all three of the designs that NUGER created from the feedback that, well, from the original 21 illustrations, but also then from the feedback of the committee over those meetings that really did a nice job in terms of kind of representing those ideas across the three.
Thank you. Tom, you had your hand.
Just a comment on the third one. When I looked at, first looked at the picture of just the head and that thing sticking out in the front, I thought, that's like a big nose or something. So just, you know, if that were the, taken off of the, off of the horse, it seems out of place. But your explanation helped. And then on the horse, again, both of the riders have the bandana up over their face. Which, which 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 I like in the the first one where where it's not, I also like the just the simple design of the first one, the second one. Looks busy with all the. Just like the the red parts of it to 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 form the the clothing and the horse. Anyway, those are my initial thoughts.
Julie, can I add just one piece?
Of course.
And I apologize for this, one of the things, and I apologize for not mentioning this before, but in addition to the idea that the bandana over the face is a little more representative of the bandit, if you will. One of the concerns, I think this is just a reality of our current our current situation, that there was some concern about having a mask. In in the refresh of a logo during a pandemic where we're all wearing masks and that would that somehow negatively impact kind of the. The the overall development, not adoption of that, so that was another reason that people were were drawn to this as a hand as a kerchief. Or a handkerchief underneath the chin as opposed to covering their face, you know, as if they're protecting them from themselves from COVID. I know that, you know, 15 years from now, that would be irrelevant, but I just wanted to share that because it was it was something the committee talked about.
Now, thanks for sharing and and feel free to jump in as as we move through discussion here, Amy, you had your hand up, I believe.
Thank you, Joel, for the presentation and it's exciting and fun to see all this coming together. I, you know, this is the first time I've seen these, and when I look at the first one. And maybe the pandemic has been going on too long, but I see the kerchief under the neck, but I also see something over the nose and mouth. It looks like a mask, like they're wearing two kirtches, I don't see a face there. So I guess I'm wondering if it if there was any talk about putting more of a face on that one, because. It just looks a little odd to me right now.
So part of that, and it was actually, it's more defined than it was in its original version. I think what people were drawn to there was that the ambiguity of that left in the shadow. And kind of unclear was was kind of a way of of keeping that neutrality of character that we really don't know who's. Who's there, even though, I mean, it's it's a little tricky when you start talking about a face revealed, but also trying to be gender neutral and race neutral. And so I think what they were trying to capture was just this idea that, you know, so if you think that the sun is shining down, there's a shadow cast across the face. And so the who it is and what they look like is a little ambiguous, so I think that was intentional. You know, particularly the students initially talked about the detail lines of this one were a little bit too obtuse. And so this second rendering of it brought some of that detail in the bandana you see here is a little more detailed, the hat more so. And the face left, like I said, purposely ambiguous, so that that it can really be who you want it to be or what you want to be. So that was intentional, but but I understand your point.
Yeah, so I like the hat and I like the bandana, it just seems like I'm missing part of a mouth, you know, they if they're. If it's all in the shadow, there might be some mouth in that yellow blob, otherwise to me it looks like a mask. But it's really, you know, it's fun to see all of these. I like number two a lot because I think it's. It's more clear what you're looking at, and I think it can be gender neutral. And I think you're right about number three. Definitely looks more male. And it actually is kind of a three color because it has the white on there too, so I'm not sure how that would affect reproducing it in the design. I don't have any more questions, so thank you.
Other questions, comments? Claudia.
Thanks, Joel, for taking this important task on, I'm very excited to see the update here. Many students were on the committee, I recognize a few names, so I'm I'm getting at. Was it pretty even students to community members or? How did that break down?
Yeah, so we had, we had six students participating, am I doing this right? Five students participating, one of whom. Was one of our our last year's alum, so four active students across kind of a cross section of activities. Groups and athletics, and then Nikki Hosterman, who was actually the individual who is a first year college student. He was the one who actually brought from the student council, the the request to the board. Or time escapes me a year plus ago to ask the board to consider changing and updating the logo.
Okay, that's good, I I really like the first one. I like the handkerchief around the neck area and the and the big N displayed prominently there. I think the second one, the the second and the third one on the horse, I I go to Tom that. It's there's a lot more details and all the shadows and that, but also the horse seems more competitive, if you will, in the third one. And not as competitive in the second one. But yeah, I think that the first one has a lot of great qualities, so great job on that.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments board members have? Yes, Corey.
So I'll piggyback on what Claudia and Tom said, I think number two is a little busy. I'm not particularly a fan of the bandana either in the end, it just seems oddly placed there, like they had to find somewhere to put it. I think it's more cleverly used for the harness on number three, but I more strongly prefer number one as well. I think the neckerchief and the logo stand out pretty well. I don't really share Amy's concern because I think about the face, I I kind of see it, but the ambiguities there, but I guess my question about the ambiguity. Is I appreciate the effort going into the neutrality, but given that we're looking past to the past of the 1860s, isn't it kind of implied? Who's under the hat and behind the mask? I mean, is that a concern at all about using a human because I wasn't on the board when this decision came forward to go ahead? And I guess I didn't know what to expect for tonight. And I guess I didn't even think about a human being used for the logos, I guess I was a little surprised to see humans used for all three logos, I thought were maybe gravitating away from that. So. With that in mind, with the neutrality idea, I'm just kind of curious about the thought process behind that. If the implication is still there, even though it is gender neutral, it's race neutral.
Sure, and I could just tell you, Corey, what the conversation, you know, how the conversation unfolded with the committee, that I think that that. For those that were participating in the process, felt that it did. That it did kind of speak to those those components of the request that the board gave us in in moving forward toward a refresh. Of the original 21, there were actually a number of non-human. Entries into the process. The. The committee, as it reviewed those ultimately settled on on having a human being a component of all the concepts that they moved forward to. To Nugar for that even in that first that first iteration, so as an example, the idea of of a Raider being. A cow, so our theme of cows, colleges and contentment, so an image of a cow being the 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 independent logo or the image of a horse, if you think of the Bronco. Of the Denver Broncos that those types of images were shared in that initial process of reviewing the 21. But the committee, the committee was fairly resound in. In wanting that representation to be in human form.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Joel, for making the presentation.
You're welcome.
Number one, I may read too much into this, but the first time I glanced at it, it looked like Northwestern. A clever way of displaying the N and a W. So if the stylist could change that a little bit to look more like the left side of the bandana rather than. And a W on the side. Just a knit. And I, if we go to number two or number three, I would like the horses to look a little more sinister. Competitive was your choice of words. More more sinister. And I think that can be done with a few strokes of a pen. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Other questions, comments? Jeff, do you have any feedback you want to share?
Not really.
I'm sorry, did you not hear that? I'm sorry, maybe I'll start over. I was complimenting you on the excellent committee that you put together, and I really appreciate the broad section of stakeholders that participated. And then obviously did a lot of work to get us to this point, so I was saying that in my mind, this mascot and and the logo. Really liken to thinking about the University of Minnesota and the strong M as a logo and obviously Goldie Gopher as the mascot. So you alluded to something where you said maybe that N, the font on design number one. Would be the font size that or the font that we would use going forward for the N, right now, I think it's sort of de facto block. And is that something you would see then as the new N for the logo?
Here's what I would say, I probably misspoke a little bit, Julie, what I would say is that that once there is a final N, the committee had a real strong. Notion that that as you look at all three logos with the M that that appears there, that that be the N that is truly the Northfield N. So it wasn't so much saying that that first logo was the one. But that whatever, you know, and and Nugar's process newer was aware that we were interested in having that kind of marquee. Northfield N being something, I mean, obviously, sometimes it's hard to be unique when it comes to an alphabet letter. But is as close as possible to have an N that is. This is my own term, kind of a trademark N for Northfield, so wherever it's used, so baseball hat might not use the logo, but they might use the letter that that is the N. That you see on the logo, or if you see a hockey sweater that uses the N instead of the the head or the the ultimate logo that that you approve. That it's coming off of that logo, so that it's not just you find an N that works online and you throw that on a T shirt. That it would be very intentional, that whichever logo it was, that we would finalize that N to be a font that we all accepted as kind of the approved. Northfield High School N.
That's really strong, I appreciate that a lot, and you talked about the pantone colors that we would give, so basically, we would have Nugar develop a identity guide. So that, you know, anyone who wanted to reproduce either our mascot or our logo would know the guidelines for doing that, so we would have consistency.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, I think that. What did I understand kind of to say is the the number one that was really preferential for the committee? And number two, that those two really could sort of be used. As sort of one and de facto number one or number two, depending on. You know, the the size of a logo that some or mascot that somebody wanted, so those were sort of one and two. And in some cases, if you if someone wanted to do the horse, that that would be also deemed as. The preferential, if if a horse were to be included in the mascot design.
So if, yeah, if ultimately the board wanted the horse to be attached or to be attachable. That that second option would be the priority over the third, but you know, that bearing in mind that that there's been some conversation about the how the horse looks or how the horse doesn't look. That ultimately, it was the rider themselves that that was, you know, kind of representing that preference. So again, the gender and race neutrality, so if it were about. You know, if the board wanted to move in the direction of saying we want a horse and a rider combination, it would be the second image and the fourth that would work in concert. And the third and the fifth, so it would be the same head, so you wouldn't have two different heads functioning. As the Northfield logo, the idea being that we are consistent across the board with with the only variation would be that. Again, this sounds kind of funny, but the horse and the rider are together, or that rider is separate, but it's it's not a different rider altogether.
I want to share your screen again, show the.
Sure.
Let's really point those out, please.
So again, so if if this this logo is a standalone, so there's no horse that goes with this one. In the interest of having a combination of a horse and rider, what what we could do is create that usage guide. That says which situations we use the full horse and rider and which we use just the head. So like, for example, this would be a lot to put on a football helmet. This would not be. And so those two would be used in concert and this one. And number five would be used in concert. But if it but this that these, the committee said their priority was this logo. And this logo would be a a single logo, it wouldn't be something that you would combine with with another image of a horse.
Okay, so the other thing, you know, I know that the committee just spent a great deal of time and effort to get us to this place. So can you talk about the discussion around? How they felt the horse should should look, you know, menacing versus. You know, just maybe the conversation around, so we can understand what where what brought them to the point where the. That the facial sort of features of the horse.
Sure, and I would say that I would say that ultimately, design number two. And design number three. Here's what I'm going to go this direction, that if if it were a choice between two and three. The main focus of priority here was about the rider themselves, so the rider and the 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 possession position in terms of gender and race neutrality. And that it was more representative of the full community, so if if. And and quite frankly, the committee's tendency was away from a rider on a horse, that their their priority was without the horse. So so in and in most cases, they were, you know, what we talked about, and I'm going to skip over the horses for a second and go through the three heads. If you look at this one. You jump to the the second head. And the third, you know, that the size of the head, the detail of the head is going to, you know, it's going to look good on a on a pocket, it's going to look good on a helmet, it's going to look good on a hockey sweater. The shoulder of a volleyball jersey. And so I think that that in general, that the the committee's perspective was was they weren't as crazy about having the horse in it. They could live with the idea of having two options, one with the horse, one without, but if if they were going with a single logo. The the horse was a was 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 less of a priority than having a strong logo that they could live with and move forward with. In terms of the horses themselves, I would say that, you know, Claudia's word competitive. That was noted, there was some expression of this particular horse, perhaps looking a little more hobby horse like. And this one looking more like it was, you know, on the run, and again, Noel used the word menacing, but more kind of intimidating. In their look, and again, those are, you know, if if it's if it's the board's request that we move back and and. Work to alter something with Nugar, obviously, that would be the board's perspective to make that decision as well. You know, the committee has not. The committee is not in a place where where they have said, you know, well, we just can't take this anymore, so I mean, they've been been very involved and inactive in the process. And I think everyone wants to get it right, so that's it's an important piece that that they feel the process is played out in an appropriate way.
Okay. Yes, I agree. We are, we really do need to get this right. So again, we continue to be grateful to the committee for their work and they did some really great work to get us to this point. So I just wanted to refresh our memory as, as a board, when we gave the direction to Joel Lear and the committee in terms of how the parameters of designing the, the mascot and the parameters were, will not be a specific person, but an embodiment of the townspeople who defended against the James Younger Gan, gang, cannot include any weapons or weapons, must be relatively simple to recreate, needs to appropriately represent both male and female students and may include a background. So just so we recall what, what parameters we gave the committee. Um, I, I think I agree with Corey in that the mascot, the first mascot, I think the beauty of it is it, it, you know, the, the facial features, the lack of the facial features does give it some ambiguity. And I don't think that, you know, a mascot always needs to be a completely literal interpretation of a person. I think that, you know, it, it, it is, you know, I, I actually like that it doesn't have the facial features. I think that's one of its strengths. And you know, if you look at it, you know, you could reproduce the bandanas, you know, it, it's standalone in terms of increasing, you know, this school identity and, and one thing we've never been able to have really is a mascot running around on the football field or any other field of competition or academic event, you know, knowledge bowl or whatever, having as often as Goldie Gopher appears everywhere on the University of Minnesota campus, it would be easy to have an actual mascot. So I think that's, that's pretty exciting as well. So I think we have to decide how we want to move forward at this point. Honoring the, the work of the committee and their recommendations and then deciding as a board what seems reasonable to ask them to go back to consider. Dr. Homan.
Yeah. So I think the key thing is to get this right. This is something that's going to last for a long time. So Mr. Lear and Mr. Olson, uh, tag teamed this. One of the key things that, that Mr. Lear has not mentioned is that there was some real feedback about making sure that this mascot represented all activities as opposed to just athletics. I think, you think about the rise of typical mascots, it was really around athletics, but we've gotten feedback from students that they would really like to see this mascot represent all of the activities and the school itself. So I think that that's an important part. I think that as you look at what has been produced, it meets the guidelines of what you had asked for, uh, when we passed this, I believe in October. And there's, you know how I like to roll. Normally I like to have you see something at one meeting and then ask you to vote on it at the next meeting because we want to keep things moving. But at this one, we intentionally did a little bit of a reveal tonight, right? So that you, this was not something that was in the packet. This was not something that was in the table file. We'll put it on the website afterwards as kind of a corollary to the table file, but we want to have a little bit of a dramatic reveal. So if, if we think we need more than one meeting, so if at the next meeting, we just want to have some additional feedback and questions, we can certainly do that and then push the vote out one more meeting beyond that. If the board, uh, seems to have a very clear preference and says, nope, we're ready to go, we can certainly, you know, keep moving, uh, at the next meeting. But my sense is that this is something that is going to adorn uh, all sorts of shirts and hats and backpacks and all sorts of things over time. So I think you want to make sure that you take a little bit of time to make sure that you can ask any other questions, that you are ready to vote on a recommendation. So it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, certainly can. But what I'm sensing is that we probably want to have the next meeting, just to have people reflect, think about it, bring any other comments forward, ask any questions and then vote at the next meeting. So the next meeting would be questions, comments. The following meeting would be the formal vote in terms of which way we were to go. So I just want to see if that makes some sense to people.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Homan. Amy, I saw your hand first and then Tom.
Yeah. Um, so I have a question about the process. I'm looking at this and, and you know, everything's sinking in and settling down and I'm, I do really like the first one, but I'm still stuck on the face. And I was happy that you, um, Julie reread what the instructions we had given them were. Because it seems to me, one way of differentiating between the townspeople and the bandits is whether or not they had a mask on their face. And I'm wondering, these all have their curtains up around their face. So they all look more like the actual bandits than the townspeople. And I know we'll have townspeople comment on that because the whole history of our town has been to celebrate the defeat of Jesse James and not Jesse James himself. So my question is, can we ask Newger to do something with the face part of this that doesn't look like it's covered, but still keeps it gender neutral? Can we have some options for the face? And that's where I am right now.
Joel, do you know in the myriad of options you looked at, if there was anything that did have more specific facial features and if those were eliminated for specific reason?
No, this is actually as detailed as this particular, uh, version was. So this was, this was a very simple, in fact, a couple of students prior to some of the detail being added said, it was just a little bit too obtuse to really even, you know, kind of have it embody anything. And I, you know, I mean, I think it's going to be up to the board. I mean, if you're, if, if Amy, if your question is, do, do you want three versions of the same logo with different faces on each one? I mean, that is, that's walking us backward a little bit. And that is certainly the board's prerogative to make that decision. But, but in working through some of those, those images that we, uh, that we played with even from the beginning of the process, moving those concepts to Newger and then Newger creating, uh, drafts of the ultimate logos that you see, ultimately the logos you see here. You know, it was really what the committee was charged with. But again, we are, we are committee appointed, you know, to do the work of the board. So we are, you know, I'm prepared to serve in any capacity necessary.
So, um, Joel, I think I recall that this specific, specific design was, was a preference for the committee because the bandana is clearly below the face versus worn as a bandana over the face. So for example, a raider with a bandana over the face and a towns person with a bandana below their chin.
Correct. Right.
But then I think what, what I understand, maybe some of the, where you think there's an opportunity maybe is that the way it's drawn now, it still looks as if that per, that writer or that mascot is wearing a mask. Okay. Tom, you had a question.
Yeah. And I think I agree with, uh, Amy. Um, and it reminds me of a character from, I think the movie Dick Tracy, where they had like, um, like a black cloth over their face. So you couldn't, couldn't really, you could see the, the indentations of the nose and the mouth, but you couldn't, you couldn't see it. So there was still a covering. So maybe just tweak it so you can see a little bit more detailed facial. So yeah, I mean, getting a few more of those. My, my other comment was, uh, after Dr. Homan mentioned that, you know, this represents everything, not just sports. And the, the, with the horses, you get the impression that, you know, it's a team charging on the field or something. So it's, that would be more, or if it's a ferocious or, or anything like that, when, uh, when, when it's the band concert or, uh, the knowledge bowl or something, it would seem out of place. Whereas this one is more, even more neutral in, in that regard. So I like this. I think maybe just giving a few more tweaks of the face, facial features, just to see what they are. Maybe it'll ruin it. Um, but, uh, I like this.
Yes, Noel.
I agree with the previous comments. And I'm thinking five years from now, at a, uh, at a speech competition, it's going to be interesting to see a, this, this logo with a cowboy hat and a mask over their face. And, and it, it, I don't, I don't think that's going to represent Northfield. I think the townspeople in Northfield didn't have masks over their faces. I think they were just people on the street or citizens that were down trying to solve the problem. And, uh, all due respect, and I, I like this, but I, I think five years from now, someone's going to look at it and say, boy, this, this, this doesn't look, think, I don't think this is the Northfield that I live in.
So Joel, with this discussion then, do you feel like maybe what there is maybe some, it's not maybe as apparent to someone looking at this first logo that you have on the screen, that that bandana is actually below their chin?
I could just tell you that, uh, there was not a single person on the committee that, I mean, the, the committee discussion about this as a preference was that the bandana was below the face. So there wasn't, you know, of these, of these members of the committee, there was no confusion about where the bandana was.
Okay.
So I mean, I'd be, you know, I'd be happy to go back to Newger and just say, here's some of the feedback from, from the board. I mean, they would be, you know, I'm sure they would be open to that. I do, like I said, the, you know, one of the strengths of this particular design in terms of the ambiguity of the face was exactly that. It's an ambiguous face. So, so I think that, you know, that was a preference for the committee, but it, it certainly is something that we could ask Newger to tweak and see what they come up with. But there, like I said, the, the, this bandana in this particular image was, was seen by the committee as being under the chin because that was a, a major point of discussion about the preference of this over others.
Okay. And then the other aspect to that is the N. Do you know if there was some specific conversation about why they chose that particular font?
No, and that, and, and I would say that, uh, you know, I think that the, the N, the font of the N is absolutely discussable and negotiable. What Newger talked about was, you know, kind of creating, if you will, and I think really, I, I think we could see that as kind of a process separate from the actual shape and identity of the logo to say, okay, let's finalize the N then, because it's, it's almost as, you know, going to be in, in use as much as the logo itself. So, um, we didn't discuss to say this was the font. What we discussed was, let's come up with something that then becomes kind of the identity of the N for us as well as the logo itself.
Now, I really appreciate that thought. And I think we do really have an opportunity. I mean, an N is our brand. I think it's, it has a lot of strong brand identity and coming out of this, I think we have a real opportunity to, to develop some excitement around the Northfield Raider brand and how much work we've done on Raider Nation and using that as a point of connectivity for our students and all the pride around being Raider Nation. So I think that, you know, one thing that when I think about our current Raider mascot, I think that, you know, some of the interest in that particular mascot probably for, for a lot of reasons has waned and we haven't seen it out there in, in such a prominent way as maybe if we were Board of Regents trying to replace Goldie Gopher, you know? So I think that if we do have a mascot that, you know, we can, we can potentially have some increased excitement around the mascot. But I believe the N really stands as a very strong brand identity for Northfield Raiders. So I guess it would be interesting to ask Newger what their design, um, thoughts were around the particular N that they used. And I'm, I'm really glad the committee thought about the standalone N there. Cause again, I think I see the, it's just the de facto block style N that is used now. But I think it's really important that we have an identity guide coming out of this so that we can provide anyone who's going to reproduce this, whether on, you know, apparel or merchandise or just in print media, that they know that we want that consistency. Cause I think it's
Right.
So I think what I'm, I'm hearing, oh, Noel has, has a comment. And then I, I think we can sort of, oh, and then Claudia and Jeff. So, so we'll keep the discussion going and then determine how to move forward. So Noel.
Uh, I don't see enough distinction of the face. And I know you're trying to keep it, uh, gender and race neutral. But it's not clear to me that the bandana is below the chin. And there, it would probably be a couple of strokes of the felt tip pin on Newger's part to be able to make that a little more distinctive.
Sure.
And, uh, and secondly, when my son, when he was in high school, he wanted to put an N on his, his, is, is a little helmet of some kind. And this is exactly the one that I used. And I would suggest that, that we copyright this. And, uh, there is a simple way of doing a poor man's copyright. And, uh, for all of you listening, you just simply do what you want to do, put on an envelope and send it to yourself and never open the envelope. And then it has legal stature, a status in a court of law that, that, that is a copyright from the dated, uh, the postmark. And that will identify when you copyrighted that. And all you have to do is a, what, put a stamp on it and send it to yourself and never open it. And I would do that with the N. In fact, maybe the whole logo.
Joel was, uh, you know, from, from what I understand of trademarks, there's, there's actually very few schools that, that do trademark their logo and/or mascot just because of the, the really the inability to enforce it in any sort of consistent way in terms of how many times the logo and mascot would get reproduced. And then certainly a well-meaning advertising or something done in the community. And then we would have to, we would have to, you know, obviously pursue any sort of use outside of, of the trademark. So, um, I think, I think what we can do is be very intentional about having an identity guide developed where there's specific colors and uses that are well detailed within the identity guide for anyone who wants to re, reproduce it, whether print media or on actual merchandise. And that does help get the consistency and often they look to that and because they do want to reproduce it consistently without having the, the onus on us to, to have to reinforce anyone who either, you know, very well could have just misinterpreted it. And then suddenly we're pursuing trademark infringement type, type things that, that we really wouldn't have the time to do in, in a very consistent way. So, um, I, I do hear then that board members are, are struggling a bit to to know that that bandana is definitely below the chin and that maybe there's some sort of additional facial feature that could be added to this. If that's something that Newger could, could consider doing. And, and maybe just so that we could see what that looks like and have the ability to decide whether the ambig, ambiguity that, that some of us feel is, is a strength or that we decide it's enhanced with facial features in terms of the positioning of the bandana and still, um, somewhat gender neutral um, in terms of the, the additional features, adding clarity for anyone who's, who's, uh, looking at the mascot. Jeff, I think you had your hand up.
I was just going to say that, uh, I think Joel Lear should be here too. I mean, if he's not here in this session, I mean, just to be the, and to have a, a logo that's for sports and for activities. I mean, you want to have a, you know, and I'm a football guy, so I'm, you know, linebacker guy, played here, obviously Northfield and at Augsburg. But, um, you know, I, I don't know. I think that you have, I, I don't, I don't really, I, I guess I don't really have a strong opinion on, you know, I, I didn't know what to expect and I, I just have to take a look at this and think about it. So.
There, um, I think you're, you're asking for Joel Olson to be here.
Yeah, I think Joel should be here.
Cause you, you said Joel Lear, but Joel Lear is here.
Joel Olson, sorry, I get my.
Yeah. And Joel was involved in the committee the entire time and he was scheduled to be here tonight. He just had a last minute piece that did not allow him to be here. So.
But you know, to have a logo and you have, I mean, it is sports and activities. You know, y- y- you can have multiple logos for different things. I mean, even if you wanted to use, you know, the N for a logo for some of your activities things instead of a sports type of logo. I mean, that's, that's okay too. So, yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't think that for what I'm looking at here, this is some of the stuff, what I kind of expected, but, uh, I guess we move forward with what we have and go from there. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Corey, oh, Claudia and then Corey.
I just want to make sure that that message keeps being heard that having the ambiguity of the face is really important. So if you light it from a different area, and I'm not an artist, so I don't know what I'm talking about, but I know that if you light it from a different area, I just did a search for clip art, shadowed cowboy faces or figures. It's going to reveal more of the face and it's going to, it's going to reveal one gender or another, I think. So I think it's really important to leave it more shadowed in that area. Could they define more, you know, that the bandanas around the neck? Probably, but I, I think it's really important to leave the face shadowed. And I really see all kinds of backgrounds being able to identify with that, you know, this particular version of it because you could have, you know, the actual cowboy, the ranch hand, the towns person. It's, I think it's, I think it more, more backgrounds would identify with this particular version. So I just want to make sure that I say that because I know that message is being repeated right now that we need more of the face revealed. And I really feel like we don't need more of the face. I don't know, maybe a little bit more, but not very much more where you could tell one way or the other.
Corey.
A couple of questions or a couple of comments and then a question from Matt. So just to piggyback on Claudia's comments, I, I appreciate the ambiguity in here. I think the committee and Nugger worked hard to get to this point. And ultimately this is a piece of art. And I think we can see that and appreciate it. And I think the structure is there to be clear about what we're looking at. And we should let others interpret, interpret it for themselves beyond that. So I think I share the same concerns of, as Claudia, that if we start adding a couple of brushstrokes here or there, that it's going to be too well defined then. And I think that's, you know, backed up by the comments from Joel saying that this was the most defined piece they had. The rest were even more broadly vague. So I think the work has been done on that respect, but I think there's been at least three board members who've clearly stated that they'd like to see more. So I'll leave that to the hands of Superintendent Hillman to discern. I have a question about the font. So I know Julie has talked about that a few times. The N used in all three of them looked very different to me. So the one and the third one looks like it's the current N that we use. The second one has a little extra serif on the bottom right. So that's a different font. And the first one's clearly very different, which I like the use of it here, but obviously that can't be the traditional N because you have to have the illusion of depth and motion because it's on a bandana that's going up a neck. You can't just slap our basic N on there. So I think if we stick with this logo, ultimately it's going to be difficult to adhere to, you know, the trademark N or whatever we want to call it, but also create that illusion of the neckerchief and having the motion up. So I feel like that's going to be a sticking point. I like what's here though, but you're not going to use that same N everywhere for obvious reasons. So I don't know if we have flexibility on that or if we really want to stick to this branded N or not. So just a comment there. And then for Matt, yeah, it sounds like we're going to have a additional meeting to discuss this, which is probably good. But can we approve a logo without finalizing that letter? Like if we know we want to do this logo, but we just have to figure out the letter. I mean, it's part of the logo. So I feel like no, but just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, I think that you could look at this in a number of different ways. I think that you could authorize moving ahead with one particular concept with a directive to say, we need to fix this, not fix, we need to further identify the one part of it, the letter, the, the letter N. I think that that's very helpful to the committee and then our, and Nugger to be able to help try to get that one portion right. You could wait until you have the whole enchilada as well, you know, everything all at one point. But my sense would be that I think that, I think we should reflect upon what your comments are. And then I think we should ask Nugger Communications to give us some choices about what are the options for moving forward in terms of, would they like to have one of the options selected and then work with the one part where there might need to be some, some tweaks to it? Or would they prefer to have everything selected at the same time? I think that we could, we could, we also have to resist redesigning it to a certain extent. I think that I, I, I'm not an artist, as Claudia says, she's not. And so I think sharing what we are looking for and then asking them to make some modifications is reasonable. So you can make that decision as we move forward. You could say, we are going, we're comfortable to approve the bulk of the mascot. But then looking, because I think there's two terms we need to be really clear. There's the mascot and there's the logo, right? The mascot is the entire photo here. The logo would be the N that's on the neckerchief. That's the way I look at it and distinguish between the two. So you could certainly look at the, at the mascot itself and then say, we just want to make sure that the logo itself is consistent with what we want it to be off of the mascot. And I think the key thing there is going to be, you're, I think you're right, Corey, that it's the, the depth and the way that it's presented in this way is going to be, you want to have it similar as what we're hearing the committee say, which I think makes sense. But it is not going to look exactly the same because it's going to be at a different angle when you just put it straight on. So we, my sense would be that you could move forward in a couple of different ways, but I think we should all reflect upon it. This is why I think an extra meeting is a good idea. And I think we can start to get the depth of that at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
It does. And I think number two is a good illustration of what happens when you just slap an N on something. I think, you know, it doesn't look that off, but it looks like, well, this is a good place for an N. Whereas for the horse, at least on the harness, it looks like it's a little more natural. And one last comment, I know we want to move on from this is floating heads generally aren't good. And I think Joel kind of made a joke of that early. Two and three, clear, the headless horse ones clearly are cut near the neck, whereas the first one with the extension of the neckerchief makes it look more whole. So from a visual standpoint, it's, it's less awkward in that way, I would say. Just additional comment.
I think as far as the ends go, I mean, like we, we have two ends and it's not terrible to have, even when I talked to Nugger a while back, it's not terrible in a sense to be the Northfield, be the N, but you know, we've got that fatter end and we've got that more narrow end. So it would be kind of nice if we got it down to one
Single one.
N, the one N, and it would be on that or not. Kind of what, I was trying to listen here a little bit and try to hear what, I would be interested to hear what consensus one could get with the activities people and the sports people to maybe with coaches and people to be on the same, you know, page. All along with logos, I was thinking more of a, you know, a raider on a horse, but it's, I'm not saying that that's bad, but neither one of these are, well, I don't know. It seems to me that even with the committee and the things that they're doing on that, that, that they, it kind of had the consensus on, I'm calling it the, the shadowed raider. To me, it seems like if you could work on some different versions of that or get close to tweaking that with like two or three other versions or doing whatever it is with that one, that seems like kind of more of the consensus for one, you know, one unified logo from that standpoint. But I mean, I, I was always thinking, you know, and it, it is, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, it is the raider on a horse. You know, it is the Northfield Raiders, but it's interesting to see when you put those people together that they came up with this shadowed raider. And, and I think that that seems to be, if you tweak that a little bit, you know, what do you end up with? Or, you know, what version of a raider on a horse, you know, works? And then like you said, I mean, you're taking, because you're either, you know, you're there putting that on a, you know, if you, if you have a side of your football helmet or top of your cap or whatever, I mean, look at, look at the Carlton Knights or whatever, that Carlton Knight, the knight is just a, you put the knight on there, you put whatever else on there, wearing a baseball cap, you've got that logo right there, you know, and, and if you start trying to do too many things, I'm not saying that one's perfect. I'm not even saying when I look at it, I kind of get it 100%, but I mean, maybe to finalize three different versions of that, that it just goes, yeah, I get it. You know, when you look at it within the first, you know, 30 seconds or two seconds, you kind of get it. But so I don't, I don't know. I think, you know, to see where that goes, because I'm trying to figure out something that would maybe work for both activities and both sports. But, you know, again, there's nothing wrong with just, you know, using an N if we like the N, but it should be whatever's on there. That logo, that should be the primary N that we're using. And again, it is not the end of the world to have a couple of different ends, but I don't know what.
I think standard, I, I'm hearing you, Jeff, saying, I think this is what the committee said as well, standardizing the N so that you basically lift it off the handkerchief and put it on to the, and I think that that can be done, but I think that goes to the style guide as well, right? Because, because of the depth, when you remove it, it's not going to look exactly the same. And Joel, I don't think that's what the committee meant. I think that they meant that it should be the same N, but, but I'm sure they understand that when you lift it off of the, the mascot itself, it's going to probably look slightly different because it's at an angle currently. And most of the time when you use the N, it's going to be straightforward. Would you just, is that sound fair, Joel?
I'm not exactly sure what you just asked me, but I can tell you that the committee was very interested in a consistent standard N to be used across all of our, whether it be, whether it be stationary, whether it be a helmet, whether it be whatever it is. So, you know, and to Corey's point, he's right, you know, the N in this picture is on fabric that would be very loose and floaty. So I'm sure, you know, I would, I'm not a graphic artist. I would trust Nugger could come up with something that could be on an image like this, but then also be lifted off. And, you know, and placed on a, you know, it's, it's the Chicago Cubs sea blowing on the, the flag out in center field. And it's also on a jersey, you know, so it's just, it's, it's agreeing that one, even though it's moving in the wind, looks the same as the one of the jersey. And I think that that's what the committee was seeing is very important.
You know, I think a good logo, you know, if you put that just on my baseball hat alone, period, that's it. And if we got that tweaked down to looking at that, whether it's the speech team or whether it's the football team with the same one unified N with the same unified picture, that's the logo. I mean, if you, and that's the simplest form, and I think that that's the biggest consensus on that. And again, I was always kind of leaning more towards, you know, the raider on a horse thing, but it seems the way, me, the way that if you end up doing that, you're ending up like chopping it up. Like sometimes you're showing the head and sometimes you're showing that with the horse. And I think, you know, that's, you know, if you want, here, here, we're going to put the logo on this, boom, you know, that, that, that I think really would make the uniformity of uniforms, you know, unusual in a sense, but boom, I mean, that's a logo. I mean, whatever version it is of that that one would end up with, I think is probably that you can get everyone to kind of get, you know, 80% agreement on. It's probably a reasonable thing to end up with.
Okay. Well, oh, yes, Noel.
The one that's on the screen I prefer, I would rotate it in a way that the N is a little, a little more direct. This is a, a face on, and I'd rotate it in a way that the N is a little more direct and a little bit more obvious. And I put the bandana tied to the right also, so it's visible. Just Nugger can figure that out.
Okay. So I think I really appreciate the, the great discussion we've had and everybody's input. I think Joel, again, the committee did some really great work here and it has come up with some, some good choices for us. I think it, it appears that we're, we're coming together around the committee's preferences as well. I think going back to Nugger and just having this discussion around the N, again, they are the, they are the experts and the professionals and understand, you know, the font styles and, and how we would use that as, you know, our identified logo and, and maybe get some feedback there that we could share with the board at the next board meeting. And I don't know. We've had some questions around the ability to maybe add facial feature. I think the board seems somewhat divided on that, but if maybe there's an option they could show us that gives a discernible facial feature, facial features to, to that option just so that we could see what that looks like. And I think Claudia's point is well taken for, for me as well in terms of ambiguity. And that's what we obviously heard the committee felt was the strength of this, but maybe sometimes to see it brings it clearer to people that, that, that priority for, to have that ambiguity is really lost when there's any sort of facial feature added. That might be something that, that would give the board members more comfort and understanding, you know, their direction initially in terms of why that logo or that mascot doesn't have those, or maybe we decide that the ambiguity, ambiguity still exists with some additional facial features. And I think Nugger is extremely talented and, and really understands. And do you feel like we have explained a couple of, of the maybe direction that we would not totally redesigning, but maybe doing some tweaking and then really having a more conversation around the actual N? Do you feel like we're giving you what you would need to move forward, Joel?
Absolutely. You bet. I can work with that. Definitely.
And I just, I think we just again emphasize thanks to Joel Lear and Joel Olson for taking on this really important work. And I think if you look at that group of people on the committee, right, we had a good cross-representation of current students. We had a very recent alumni. We had people who are current athletic coaches who are also alumni. We had people who are from the community who don't have any children in school, but are, so I think that when you think about looking at how that committee was brought together and the work that they've done, I really think we should be really proud of the work that Joel Lear and Joel Olson have done and the committee that they picked to give you, I think some really quality images. And of course, we can't say enough about our strategic partner, Nugger, for their work to bring these images to life. So we also have to thank the 21 submissions, right, Joel? Was how many? I think there was, was it a total of like 18 or 19 people with 21 submissions? So if you go all the way back, right, this is something that the entire community had an opportunity to be involved in. So we're getting close. We, I heard us narrow it a bit tonight. Joel Lear and Joel Olson have their orders to be able to get a little bit of additional pieces for you and we'll keep this moving and we will have a solution to this this spring.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Absolutely. You bet. Thank you.
So our next item for discussion is the Boys Swim Dive Cooperative sponsorship. Dr. Hillman, are you just going to step in?
Yes, I am going to take this one this evening. And so as you know, from time to time, the school district will enter into a cooperative sponsorship for various athletics. And it really typically, most often is with smaller school districts that are adjacent to us who don't have enough student athletes to run their own team, but would like to have their student athletes participate with our teams. So we have a number of things and our most popular partner is our KDA Charter School, obviously, but from time to time, we will also have cooperative sponsorships with Cannon Falls or with Randolph. And then there also runs a course where sometimes the students from that smaller school district no longer have an interest in, in that sport anymore. We do carry some of the smaller schools population or their enrollment as part of deciding which class we are placed in. So we pay close attention to this and we want to make sure if we have a cooperative sponsorship with a school that isn't interested in providing us student athletes anymore, that we dissolve that. So that was what we're bringing tonight. Again, we're bringing it to you as an item for discussion and report. We're not asking you to vote on it tonight. We'll have you vote on it at the next meeting, but really we're suggesting that we dissolve the cooperative sponsorship between Northfield and Randolph for the Boys Swim and Dive, beginning with 2122 school year. And just the fact is that we are looking at, we just don't have the same number of students who are interested in participating. So again, it's not a huge issue, but it is, we don't do this very often. So I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to see it. And we've already gotten the, the Randolph has already said that yes, they support dissolving the cooperative sponsorship for this athletic activity.
And just for clarity, if we were to have some Northfield students step forward, we, this is something that we can reexamine as often as
Absolutely. Yes. You can, if, if we have some Randolph students two years from now and they approach us about having a cooperative sponsorship, we can certainly consider it at that time as well.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay. Yeah, it's good to review the process of how we do this. We've always been able to, to serve other students from other communities and oftentimes, sometimes the numbers do help our own, our own teams compete. I know for the Alpine Ski Team cooperative, we added Red Wing and it significantly increased the, the number of athletes competing, which actually helped the overall team. So. Okay. We will move on now to the proposed 2122 general fund budget. Unfortunately valid. Unfortunately, Val is not able to be here tonight, so Dr. Hillman will be making that presentation.
Yes, so um again, Val had a family issue that required her attention this evening, so I'm pinch hitting for her. And of course, she has all of the items that are prepared well for us. So I'm just going to walk us through the slides. And so Tim, if you want to bring the slide, Tim and Bruce, if you want to bring the slide deck up, that's great. Okay, so for the, let's go all the way back to the beginning, please. There you go. So what we want to take a look at to begin with is the um general fund budget. And so let's go to the next slide. So as you know, the most important driver of our revenue is enrollment. Enrollment drives approximately sixty five percent of our revenue. And what you're going to see is that um you know already this year, due to the pandemic, our enrollment declined sixty five students below what we had projected. And all of you are also aware that our enrollment uh has been declining over the past several years. We're projecting that it will continue forward. That is in alignment with the uh study that Hazel Reinhardt did for us several years ago. Just as she had said initially, uh, the elementary enrollment is where we would see the initial decline and we would see some increase in the secondary enrollment. We use something called the cohort survival methodology, which means we move people to the next grade. And so what we're going to see it, uh, we're starting to see this is where some of the reduction in those elementary grades is now starting to make its way into the secondary. And what's essential about that is that kindergarten through sixth grade, remember, they are at a one point oh waiting from the state for funding. And seven through twelve students earn one point two of the basic formula. And the reason is, of course, there are some more specialized classes like CTE, et cetera, uh, where it costs more to do those things. And so that's the reason that the state has those. So what Val is projecting, we are also very conservative with our enrollment projected projections, but we are projecting uh four thousand one hundred and ninety six point three five adjusted pupil units for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Go to the next slide. So we have to make a number of assumptions about the budget. Remember, the budget is a tool that we use to plan for our school activities for the upcoming fiscal year. So we have to make a number of assumptions because, of course, the legislature, who's one of our biggest funders, they are our biggest funder, does not complete their work most of the time until May and many times into June. We still have to adopt the budget before June thirtieth, and we need to do so uh as part of our planning process to be able to do it as early as we can reasonably do so. So we have to go with some assumptions. So the biggest assumption is the basic formula. It equates to fifty five percent of our total revenue. Now, a few months ago, uh, we are projecting a zero percent increase to the basic formula because of the state's economic condition resulting from the pandemic. We all know that we have seen a much rosier financial forecast from the state. But we still know that when we look at what the proposals are out of the House and the Senate and the governor, they're far apart with the uh House bill at a two percent increase over in each of the years of the two years in the biennium and the Senate at zero. So we still feel that point five percent or a half percent uh is doable. We know that that may be conservative, maybe right on on. Um, but what we think is that that's a reasonable piece for us to anticipate. What I do want to share is just what a two percent increase would mean. So a two percent increase would generate just under five hundred and fifty thousand new dollars for the district. So we talk about fighting for two percent and we are talking, you know, just around a half a million dollars of new funding. And so while we always are looking for that increase to the basic formula and two percent is what we've been trying to get each year, we know that that still isn't enough uh long term to be able to make sure that schools are supported by the state. There's also several other areas for you to look at in terms of, um, of course, when we get a double whammy, if we don't get a large enough basic formula increase and the enrollment declines. We also uh did get some additional, we either going to be a little bit, so there's some possibility of some additional dollars for special education. That's been part of uh some of the bills that we're looking at as well. And then, as we've mentioned to you, we also are anticipating a decrease in compensatory funding from the state because of the fewer people who filled out the free and reduced lunch price application. And in Val's narrative, we normally get around a million dollars and you'll see she's projecting only just above six hundred thousand dollars. So that's a pretty significant change from a a typical year to what we will have next year or are projecting for next year. Uh, also, when we take a look at the pieces around property taxes, we know that our voters have been very generous with our operating levy and it includes the uh referendum inflationary increase. So we will have a small increase based on inflation to our existing operating levy for next year. Uh, and in addition, we want to take a look at the um, I want to talk a little bit about the Esser funding and the federal sources. So right now, we are counting a little bit more than a million dollars that was part of Esser two as part of both the revenue and expenditures portion of the budget. Uh, we are still awaiting some final ruling on Esser three. Some of it was the ninety percent portion was released, that's around two point four million dollars for the school district. There's uh some possibility of some additional dollars from what's the ten percent set aside. But uh we do not have that included in this budget yet because at as the time that we are running this, we did not have official confirmation that those funds had been released. And we learned you don't count funds until they're released. So that's the federal sources. And then when we think about our local sources, um, we are, because of the financial circumstance, projecting a lesser amount of interest for next year, you know, that we invest some of our dollars. So we're not anticipating as high of an interest rate. Um, and then we are also making a su- an assumption initially that all of our admissions and things like that that we rely on, so gate receipts and things like that and activities, for example, we are making an assumption right now that they are not going to immediately go back to pre-COVID levels. So we are just trying to take that more conservative approach because I just don't think we know how it's going to roll once we are able to have more and more people uh come back to some of those kinds of events. So those are the revenue assumptions. Next screen, please, Tim. So this is our revenue summary. You'll see that we've got the historical components there. You're seeing we're looking at a uh slightly lesser amount of revenue this year than we were looking at last year. And you'll see really, when you get into that right there, you're probably at about the amount of money that we were not going to get for compensatory, pretty close, right, about four hundred thousand dollars. Let's go to the next slide, Tim. So when we look at the expenditure assumptions, again, we have other pieces that are not quite completed. So as you know, we're entering into negotiations with the Northfield Education Association, our la- our largest collectively bargained unit. Our teaching staff has done an excellent job. We have enjoyed having a very amicable and productive method of negotiations over the last fifteen years in this district. We anticipate that that will continue forward. Um, but we have to project what we're looking at for our total aggregate and we're projecting total salary aggregate increases across the entire system at about one point nine percent. And we have also taken into account uh the impact of the early retirement incentive. We did have ten teachers who took advantage of the early retirement incentive. A fewer number of uh people in the office uh and office uh um employees unit and in the educational assistance unit. Um, but we are anticipating a long term savings over the next five years as a result of uh the uh teacher, specifically around the teacher uh retirement incentive. So that's included. We also have a concern just about our health insurance piece over the next uh over the next year. So we are projecting a one point eight percent aggregate increase to expenditures for our benefits. In addition, as you may remember, the state has um increased the share that the uh employer needs to pay for the Teachers Retirement Association. So this includes that increase. Uh, it includes the increases I mentioned to the health contribution. In addition, I think that it's just really important for, it's not a, when we think about a the size of the budget we have, maybe it's not as significant, but it is a significant increase in what we're going to be paying out for unemployment. So normally, in an average year, we average about five thousand dollars in employment. For the calendar year twenty twenty, our total employment or our total unemployment expenditures was almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so the key thing is that that's something that is different. It's not a ton when you look at the overall budget, but we want you to be aware of that. Go on to the next slide, please. So when we think about non-salary and other operational, we do have our transportation agreement with Benjamin Bus up at the end of this year. And so we'll be negotiating a a new agreement. Uh, also, we are going to be seeing an increase for the city uh for their implementation of the franchise. You may have read about that in the paper. The franchise fee is a little bit of a different way of looking at uh funding for street repair. We're still learning exactly what it's going to mean for the district. Um, but what we know is that uh the city is looking at doing that differently than they have done in the past. And that's based upon some utility usage, so that's part of this as well. Um, and also, when we look at it, building discretion, we're modifying some things with the uh per pupil allocation that we provide to each building for things like their classroom budgets and things like that. So we're working through that part. And then we just always like to focus that our fund balance goal is sixteen percent of our total expenditures. Next slide, please, Tim. So these are the expenditures by program. And again, it's just a way to illustrate for you, um, it's just a, it's a way to illustrate for you how these dollars are moved around. I want to point out, uh, one part is that you'll see an increase in district support services and a slight decrease in instructional support services. From time to time, the state will dictate to us how certain programs need to be coded. And this is a result of some coding change that they had, that things that we used to be able to code to instructional services that we now have to code to district support services, really essentially the same uh positions. It's just a matter of sp- being more specific uh to align with what they have, how they have asked us to code. So you will see, this is the expenditures by program. Go to the next slide, please, Tim. And then we look at the expenditures by object, so you can see where we put our dollars. And of course, we are a people business. We pay people to come in and work with our students, which is why our salaries is always going to, are always going to be the largest area of expenditure. So you will see that we are proposing um a fifty nine million, eight hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollar expenditure budget. Next slide, please, Tim. So we take a look at the summary. I think the key thing here is no surprise to anyone. We've been talking with you about this for some time. Our good financial management has allowed us to stretch this out for a period of time. We are looking at the revised budget ending this year with an unassigned fund balance of eighteen point six nine percent. We are proposing a deficit budget uh that would still have us at fourteen point four four percent unassigned fund balance at the end of the uh next school year, that would be below our sixteen percent. We've talked about a a budget prioritization process starting this fall. Val's been very clear about that um since she started giving you the budget uh presentations in January. Again, looking at expenditures of around fifty nine thou- fifty nine million, eight hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollars. Revenue of fifty seven million, seven hundred and forty one thousand, forty five dollars. And I do want to emphasize that neither the revenue nor the expenditures include the Esser three funding, which is going to be a us uh significant amount of revenue that we will have. We are looking at how to best use those dollars and looking at a mix of things to support students as we come out of the pandemic with also some long term financial stability. So we're still working through a recommendation for um how to use those dollars. Um, but I think that that's an important part, just to know that that's not part of this particular presentation at this time. So I will uh do, go to the next slide, Tim. I think I'm at questions. So uh what I will do is I will certainly take any reasonable questions that I can answer uh this evening. And what I will tell you is that Val has also said that if there are questions uh that you have, of course, we're not asking you to approve this tonight. So if you have very specific detailed questions, uh, we can get those questions to Val. You can uh email them to her, you can email them to Anita and I, we can get them to her and we'll get you those answers uh between now and the next meeting. And of course, if we have questions that are uh many award members, we'll make sure they're part of the next board meeting presentation as well. So Val does such a great job preparing her presentations, even I can give it from time to time and sound halfway reasonable, so.
Great job. Okay, questions? I see Noel, your hands up.
I'm looking at the general fund summary on the uh very last page. And I see the percentage has been going down from nineteen, twenty, from twenty two, eighteen and fourteen. Uh, I I'm looking forward for the time when we can see the proposed uh budget out two or three years, so we can see the impact of early retirement, some of those things.
Yes, so I think that, you know, Val usually provides that in the financial forecast that she provided this year in December, if you recall, which was before we determined uh the financial or the early retirement incentive. So we do know that we're anticipating right around a million dollars worth of savings over a five year period.
Thank you.
Great question. Thanks, Noel. Other questions? Tom?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, why is unemployment so high all of a sudden?
Yeah, so what happens is uh that we have many people in the district who, while we did not lay people off last year, there are some people who had lesser hours, right, for various reasons. Um, and if you think about it, really, in our case, it's really about our hourly paid employees. We were able to keep people employed all the way through the end of the year. However, we have many employees, specifically people who work in hourly positions, who have more than one job. And so if a person's laid off from another job, that we still have a responsibility for some of the unemployment cost as part of the employer. It's and and that's my understanding of how of how that part works. So we have, we, while we did not necessarily lay people off, we did have some people who had lesser hours than, you know, what they um may would would have had without the pandemic. And then it is this piece of these other positions that people have uh where we do have an impact on that when they're laid off from another position.
Another position, not in the school district?
Not within the school district, correct.
Well, that's interesting. Um, do we have any information yet from the census, what the population is in Northfield and whether it's growing? It seems that maybe not in North, well, even in Northfield, there's houses and construction going on, but also in the areas surrounding, but still in the school district. And then so the they, the notion that the um students are going down, I don't know, I did, it seems counter uh intuitive.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I haven't seen a specific number yet from the census, so uh as soon as we have that, we'll share that with you. What I will tell you is that, remember that um some of these are just a couple of anecdotal thoughts based on your question, Tom. So the housing inventory in our community is next to nothing, right? We've all heard that, we know that I encourage you to go on and look at the uh homes that are available for sale within the community. There are very few of them, and frankly, they are fairly expensive, right? I think the last time I checked, there was one home under three hundred thousand dollars. So that's anecdotal, don't quote me, that's just, I look at that every so, every so often, just to get a flavor for what's going on in the community. Uh, had a, just had a conversation today with a building principal who has a family um who is interested in moving from a rental into a home, cannot find anything, but it's the time in their life where they feel they now need to, and so they were asking about open enrollment, right? So, you know, could we move to another community and come back and and still come to school here? And of course, that part works, you know, we 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 are able to do that. So when there's very little housing turnover or or new units, as an example, it's going to be difficult to grow our population. If you think about many neighborhoods within the community, that neighborhoods turnover, right? So in one neighborhood where ten years ago, there might have been twenty five kids getting on the bus stop. But if this, if the, if that neighborhood is not turned over, those kids have graduated and people not there to replace them. So I think you have this piece where we don't have a lot of housing turnover within the community and you don't have a tremendous amount of new construction. Now, there are things happening, right? We have a number of different projects that are happening, but they are still not going to come close to fulfilling what I am understanding that the need is. So um, you know, we support and work with a number of different folks who look at housing. You you can't turn around in our community without hearing that housing is a challenge. And not only is it a challenge, it is a challenge to have housing that a family can get into if it's your first house. So there's a number of things, there's a lot of people in the community who are very aware of this and a lot of people who are working hard on it. And if we can solve this, we can solve this for the great, I mean, we know this is not just a Northfield issue, right? It is an issue beyond Northfield. But for those reasons, Tom, that's where I think we have seen um some stagnation in our numbers. And if you think about it, the that increase that we had over that was really also corresponding with the boom in housing that happened in the mid two thousands.
Yeah, I I can certainly see that in my neighborhood. There's like one getting on the bus where there's three twenty. And then the uh my last question, so the federal government is going to now pay for or provide free meals again? Does that um affect the compensa- uh compensatory cal- calculations and negatively?
So there's two things. So this is a a challenge. Um, first of all, we're still learning about what the federal government um extension of the free meals program actually means for Minnesota. We've actually heard two differing pieces in the last week. What we know is anytime the feds pass something, it takes some time to dig into the fine print and the details. And so Stephanie Strummy, our child nutrition director, was just talking to us today about how the statewide organizations are really digging into the details of this most recent news from the uh US Department of Agriculture and trying to make sure that they know absolutely how it's going to impact. from the US Department of Agriculture and trying to make sure that they know absolutely how it's going to impact us in Minnesota. But we have to understand that there's two different parts. When we talk about the meal programs, we're talking about the meal programs, right? Free lunch and free breakfast. But over time, the state of Minnesota has linked a number of other things to the rate of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch, including the compensatory program. So it doesn't necessarily matter what the federal government does because the compensatory is based upon who qualifies, not necessarily who is taking the free meals. So the challenge that we run into is if I am getting the free meals, I have less of a motivation to complete the form, right? Because I'm not getting the service that I complete. And it's through no one's fault. We have, as a community, we have had a number of partners work very hard to try to get those forms completed. But frankly, we have people who are dealing with a whole lot more than filling out a form, right? And so I don't, I completely get it, I understand. But I also don't think that people have a clear understanding of how that can impact the funding that comes to the school system. We've sent postcards, we've made phone calls. But we just know that we have a society that is stressed right now and that sometimes it can be difficult to get that portion completed. So they, while the feds might give us the free meals, we still have to have a change at the state level around the calculation for compensatory.
Thank you.
Great questions, thanks, Tom. Noel?
Way back when, when Hazel Reinartz came to the district to present her first analysis, one of, several of the things she said are still true. Nearly no starter homes. Secondly, it's one of the best cities in the, in the state and maybe in the country to retire in. And thirdly, people that retire in Northfield don't bring kids. So as a result, you're going to see the house needs going up and the student population probably not following.
Yes, single dwellings yielding school-aged children is the key. You're right, Noel.
And we have, we also have a very, very low rental vacancy rate. So even people who might want to come here long-term, you can't even find something to rent. And so that's, that is a challenge too.
I actually work on a real estate project and I work with a broker that does franchises. I call across 10 states and talk to a lot of real estate agents. I mean, that's all over the place. It's extremely low inventories. I mean, you get a listing, you know, you get 10, 15 offers on one listing. And it's just, it's just, I mean, since 2008 and everything crashed and then you're trying to build new construction and then you have lumber prices that are through the roof. So it's really not a problem just for Northfield. I mean, it's all over the place. So I mean, we have to realize that too. But I think that we have to work as a community and as a county to figure out how do we fund and figure out our housing issues here, so.
Other questions, comments?
I, I share, Jeff, you're talking about common, common challenges that we all have and certainly one is declining enrollment. And as a district, we have fared better than, than a lot of districts. So I'm thinking about some of the, both the House and the Senate bill and then the governor that may address some declining enrollment in terms of some increased funding. So we would hope that would come through. And then, of course, we always have to talk about the special education cross subsidy. And as we look through the expenditures, the special education was one of the, 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 the increase of 4% over last year. And we already know that that is at a $6 million cross subsidy. So we hope that the legislators do, there's a, both the House and the, and the governor have some, some work there to hopefully see the light and at least stop or stabilize that growth, which would be some increased dollars there for us. So we hope maybe there's some, some optimism that a couple of things could, could improve in terms of giving us the declining enrollment and possibly helping with the special ed cross subsidy.
Yeah, this is the, we're getting to crunch time at the legislature. So your legislative action committee has been working hard to try to make sure that our representatives know what's important. And we will continue, the next few weeks are going to be instrumental in what we see come out of the legislature.
And then just one other question, when you talked about the SIR3 funding of $2,400,000, you're saying that that could potentially be an offset to current expenditures or maybe new expenditures?
Correct. So I, there's, what we're seeing initially in some of the rules is some, a pretty good amount of flexibility. There is part of it, and this is one of the things we're still learning, is there's a portion that would need to be set aside for summer school activities. Now, it's not just this summer. It could be spent over a couple of summers, which is a good thing. So we're still waiting for those specific rules on SIR3.
Okay, great, thank you. So Dr. Hillman, you are up next with COVID and COVID response. All Things COVID brought to you by Dr. Hillman.
Yes, so what I want to say is I, I'm just really proud of how our school community has continued to work forward to try to navigate this really unwieldy school year. So I'm just going to share a little bit of data and then I want to share some, what I think is fantastic news with you, which we can all use fantastic news. So I want to point out in my update, just really looking at how we have expanded our, what we have shared with the community around active cases, right? For a long time, that's all we shared, were active cases over the past 14 days. Then when we came everyone in person, starting on March 31st, of course, elementary students had been in for some time, we wanted to start publishing two other numbers that are really important. The influenza-like illness rate and then the quarantine average. And the quarantine average is really to give context to what quarantine means, right? So quarantine is when a student is asked to stay home for a period of time because they were considered close contact within six feet of someone who's tested positive for COVID-19 for a cumulative of 15 minutes during a day. Now, that could be, sometimes that could be in school. A lot of times that's out of school, it's a family thing, you know, these kinds of things. So I gave you a snapshot when I had to put the packet in on Thursday. I want to show you how quickly these things can change. So the average from April 9th to the 15th at the middle school, for example, was 5.29. That's what you had in the table. When I calculated it the next day for the 16th through the 22nd, we saw, had seen an increase in the middle school cases and thus the quarantine. So we'd already, we'd gotten up to 9.29% for a week-long average. Last Friday, we had our highest recorded yet quarantine rate at any school, which was a little bit over 12% at the middle school. So you think, oh, we got, and we're watching these numbers every day. Today, that number was at 7.62%. That's how quickly the quarantine rate can change. And it's because if you have a couple of cases that overlap or a couple of groups who are on quarantine overlap for one day, that can make the quarantine number go up for a short period of time and then it can come right back down. So we're watching it every day, but we also didn't, don't get too bent out of shape when we see it go up for a short period of time. And we don't get too excited when we see it go down for a period of time. By way of example, take a look at the high school. The previous average was 6.33 for the week of the 9th through the 15th. For the week of the 16th through the 27th, that average had gone down to 4.53 for quarantine. Today, it was at 3.82. The ILI average, the average between the 9th through the 15th at the high school was 1.72. Today, today's number for today was 1%. So the, and remember, MDH, the, the number MDH gets the most concerned about is the ILI rate being at 5% or more for an average over about a week. So while this is very difficult, right? This is very difficult day to day. What I, the point of this is that we are focused on the data and the human beings that the data represents. So we are working very hard to be able to keep the in-person model going. Right now, I would say that we're in a fairly decent trajectory. There's no way in a pandemic, I can say that this is great, never even tried to say that. But it also could be worse, right? In a number of different ways. So I think that the tools that we are using are reasonable at this point and we're continuing to look at the data daily to make sure that we know exactly where we are. And are we anticipating seeing things come up that might force us to look at something a little bit different? We're looking at that every day and we're publishing this data every week because we want to be transparent with parents and with the community. So when it comes to that, that is the current situation. What you will also take a look at is I've included the Rice County weekly incident by age and collection of COVID tests, which means that's the number of cases in the county over a period of a week. Want you to know every week, they now know I'm going to ask it. So they send me the absolute breakdown from, they tell me exactly where the zip codes, where it came from. Was it a congregant living, living setting? So I get a set of data that is far more detailed than what I've included here. But that allows us to take a look at how the cases are laying out in the county. And as you may have read in my parent update last week, the, our Northfield share of the county cases has increased. So for a long period of time, we were able to say that Northfield's relative share was small compared to the county. But we have had a couple of weeks where we've seen that share increase. So it's something that we're paying attention to. We're really talking with people about, we still have to make sure we follow all the rules. And specifically, it really comes back to when we're in familiar settings where people are letting their guard down. That's what the public health department is telling us, that that's, it is truly community spread. Now, let's talk about the happiness because today, this afternoon, I'll be sending something out tomorrow morning. Northfield Hospital and Clinics announced, they talked with us today, that beginning tomorrow, they will be offering their vaccination clinics to 16 and 17-year-old people as well as 18 and older, which means they have access to the Pfizer vaccine. And Northfield Hospital and Clinics runs a vaccination clinic every Tuesday and Friday. We will be sending parents a phone number that they can use to call to make the appointment. And we have talked specifically, we're talking with every single provider about making sure we know what is expected of people who are registering. So in many cases, you're going to have, there, where there's going to be an ask for something like a social security number and an insurance card. But the fact is they are not required and we're going to, we're making it very clear. And we know Northfield Hospital and Clinics has had a great relationship with Health Finders to make sure that there are no hurdles for people to be able to get the vaccine. It is free, the vaccine is free, there is no charge for it. And to have Northfield Hospital and Clinics ready to go is an important thing. We also know that this Thursday, Rice County Public Health is going to hold a vaccination clinic with the Moderna vaccine for people 18 and older at the Northfield Community Education Center from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. We are still getting the details about what it takes for registration there, but we specifically wanted to have a location on the north side of town. And we're still learning what does the registration look like, if anything? Or is it just a walk-in clinic? We're going to get those details tomorrow. And then in addition, we also had been working with Cub Foods and Cub Foods Pharmacy also has access to Pfizer vaccine. We had looked at doing a clinic, Cub said they could help us with a, with a clinic. And then as we looked into how we could, rightfully so, they need to know how many people they could expect. It's very difficult for us to survey people about their vaccination preference because there's, there's a number of different things involved that we just felt we really shouldn't get into. So we've worked it out with them where we are giving families the phone number to call to make a, a, an appointment at Cub. And that's something else that is, is possible there. We are also giving the vaccine spotter out. We know there are several other entities in town that offer the vaccine, Sterling Pharmacy, Walgreens and also Family Fair. We talk with most of, all of those places and we know that they just don't know if they're going to get the Pfizer vaccine. That's something that they don't have a knowledge of, of what they potentially could get. So we're trying to make sure people know all of the options that they have for vaccination while emphasizing that vaccination is a personal choice. But this is the way to defeat this thing. And so we, our goal as a school district is to be, use our convening power to make sure people know of all of the places that they can get this. And so we heard today, Minnesota is about 56% of the, of the eligible people in the state who have had at least one shot. That's a big deal. The reason that it's so important for us to be able to offer this is that once a person has their final dose, so two of the three vaccines, you got to have two doses. There's one that is coming off of pause, where a person 18 and older will only have to have one dose. But once after 14 days have expired, after your final dose, you no longer need to quarantine. And that's a big deal, especially for our 16, 17 and 18-year-olds who are involved in athletics, looking at some traditional pieces that are coming down the pike. So while we have seen like the rest of Minnesota, we've seen some increase, you know, here over the last few weeks. We're also seeing epidemiologists say that our vaccination rate may have held off the surge that other parts of the country saw, that we are not experiencing as significant of a surge as other areas have. So at the end of this, I would like an honorary degree in public health to go along with my honorary degree in meteorology and legal studies. Just kidding. But this, we have a lot of hope moving forward. And I still cannot say enough about Rice County Public Health and Northfield Hospital and Clinics. These two entities are just fantastic. And then again, when I called Cub Foods last week and said, hey, you've helped us with our, they were right on, yep, absolutely, we'll try to help. And there were some things we needed to work out, but I want to honor them that they, the question was, it was, yes, how can we help? And we had to work out the details. So we have a lot of people coming to the table who want our eligible students to become vaccinated and for families who maybe haven't had it yet. They're emphasizing that it's not just these, the students who can come, but it's also their families. Because again, the more shots that we can get in arms, the better chance we have to defeat this team, this thing sooner rather than later. So that's the COVID part, vaccination. I'm, I'm thrilled about that. Again, I want to emphasize, we understand and respect that vaccination is a personal decision. We are not trying to tell people what they should do. We're trying to make sure they know they have access to it. That's the key thing that we're trying to find. I also did share in my report this time with you, we've talked with you about the racial equity PLC activities that we have done through the year. So I thought it would be good to share with you in the community what the topics that we have done each month have been. So really, this year has been focusing on thinking about through these individual behaviors, right? So thinking about myself as an individual and how I can better serve every student who I have access to by becoming more aware of a number of different things related to racial equity. Some of these things have gotten into systems behavior as well, part of our framework. But I just wanted to show you the activities that we have done so far this year. All of these activities include something where you've read or you've watched or you've listened. And then there's a reflection with your PLC or it could be a reflection individually. So you will see all of the things that we have done this year. We plan to continue this focus for PLCs once a month for next year as well. So that's the COVID, that's the operations update. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments, board members have? Thank you. I just think a couple of things, we continue to communicate incredibly important information to our families through the COVID dashboard. Just such a really good resource to actually get the facts behind how, what, you know, what are the actual cases in a, in your child's school versus maybe what you heard through the, through the grapevine? And secondly, your efforts to find vaccines for families. That's just really excellent. And your, your really great relationships with our healthcare providers in this community has gone a long way for them to step up and say, yep, we want to help because you have that, that relationship that you've built of trust and, and they know that, that you can get it done for them in terms of organization and communication. And so thank you for cultivating those relationships and for your work particularly on finding vaccines for our families.
It's my pleasure and we have a lot of great collaboration with community partners to help come at this from every angle.
Great, thank you. Okay, we do have an additional item for discussion. It was in your table file and it's the Area Learning Center and Adult Basic Ed Agreement for students over 21, which Dr. Hillman will explain.
So very briefly here, no vote on this tonight. It came to the table file because we learned about it on Friday. So the key thing here at the end of the day is that typically, once a student hits the age of 21, they're no longer eligible by law to participate in K-12 activities. So typically, if I'm a student who has hit age 21, I would have typically, and I had not graduated yet, I would typically now have to go the GED route, right? That's not the right thing for every student. And so you are able to apply for a program through the state when you have a partnership through an adult basic education program and an area learning center where you are able to offer what's called an over 21 diploma through the local high school. The services are all provided by adult basic education. So the students aren't coming to a K-12 building. They're still going to the adult basic education program. For us, it's housed at the Northfield Community Ed Center. But the ABE program collaborates with the Area Learning Center to find out, this is really effective for kids who are missing, say, four or less credits. So they're close enough where they can get this done, get a traditional high school diploma and not have to, you're not necessarily having to restart when you go after a GED, but a GED is different than a credit attainment piece. So basically, what we would do is if a student was not done yet and they have a few credits to go, they transfer basically from the Area Learning Center to receiving their services at the Adult Basic Ed Center. We have a partnership for adult basic ed with Farmington and Lakeville. And so I think that this is important when we enter into an agreement with, that involves other districts that the board affirm it. We do not need to do that tonight. We do not need to do that tonight. Daryl Keller, who's on this is always well ahead of the game. But I wanted to make sure we could get this in the table file so that we can have you vote it on it at the next meeting. Again, what happens is an, an ABE still gets the money. So the district doesn't, the, the traditional K-12 program doesn't get any funding for this. The ABE program still gets the dollars for it, but they're just delivering the curriculum in a slightly different way. And the student, if they're successful and completing, gets a high school diploma as opposed to a GED. It uh, has been a very good program. We know of several other school districts that have done partnerships on this and it has worked out very well. It's just, if I'm a person who's only got a couple of credits left or I have to go down the GED route, we worry that people end up with neither. And so we want to make sure people have the chance to attain the degree uh, if they're close enough. So again, I'm uh, sharing this for Daryl this evening. And uh, we'll bring this to the next meeting for your affirmation.
Questions, comments, board members have? So is this a current program or we're just renewing or this?
No, we are starting this. This, we currently don't, you have to have the, the, the state needs to designate you as being able to do this and we don't have that designation as of yet.
Okay. This seems like a really great thing for, for students that are, you know, in this particular situation where that's the right thing for them. So we appreciate you bringing it forward. So we have an opportunity to keep moving forward. So this would be um, effective for students who'd want to pursue something over the summer or would it be for fall of twenty-one?
It would start in the fall of twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you. We'll bring that forward then for our approval at our next board meeting. Uh, second committee or second meeting of the month, we have committee reports. That's the opportunity for board members to talk about the work that they do as liaison um, with various um, uh, committees throughout the district. So we have two reports tonight. We'll begin with Claudia. Um, has an update on Torch Scholarship Program. Claudia.
Right. We'll take a little break from the Matt Hillman Show.
Um, thankfully for everyone.
Um, well, I mean, I did submit that kind of short report there. We have the Torch Committee met and then we um, talked about some of the successes of the program, including the Care Package Program where they send right to our students who are attending college. They send them a uh, care box with cookies and a twenty dollar bill and notes of encouragement. And that's a real successful program for helping our students um, keep going in that time of finals as new um, incoming freshmen. Um, actually, I think they send it to everybody who's former Torch student. Um, something else I wanted to share about the Torch Program that it's seventeen years old and it started off with seventeen students and now we have over six hundred students who are impacted by the program. Um, and yeah, we're going to be awarding um, over fifteen scholarships with, um, with a fund of over six thousand dollars. No spoiler alert. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And the presentation is um, May twelfth.
Any questions or comments? I just had a quick question about how the scholarships are funded.
You know, I believe it's just um, contributions. I don't think, I don't think there's a funding source. It's just private contributions. Yeah. So that's really amazing from our community to raise over six thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's excellent. Once again, Torch's doing amazing things for our students. Thank you, Claudia. Um, okay, I have a quick report on, uh, C, Schools for Equity in Education. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We had the uh, C General Meeting on Friday and it was a great opportunity for um, membership to meet Heather Mueller. As you know, she's the new Commissioner of Education, um, effective April first, when uh, Mary Catherine Ricker decided to go back to the classroom. Heather Mueller had been the point person on the pandemic. So um, really understands obviously the, the challenges there. She comes with a great background from Mankato Schools, longtime teacher and administrator. And I was really struck by her passion and her energy, optimism and commitment to always putting students first. So it was a really great opportunity. And I had um, decided I wanted to read this because there was an article in the Star Tribune when they uh, just did it. Uh, a brief introduction of her for the state to know who Heather Mueller was. And I was, uh, I'll just read it quickly because I thought it, when you talk about the work that the district has done and really districts statewide, I think she really um, points to to some, some, make some really excellent points. So um, the question that was uh, posed to her is how has the pandemic shaped your ideas for the Department of Education? And her response was when people think about education and the education system in general, they sometimes think or have the impression that's really slow to change, slow to adapt, slow system. But what we've been able to see at the beginning of the pandemic is that it's not true. We are one of the only industries in the world that had eight days to completely change the way we do our work, provide and provide support to students. So not just how we educated our students, but how they received their meals, how they had access to mental health supports, how we provide technology, access to the in, internet, set up for school age childcare programs for our essential workers. All of that really happened in an eight-day span. With that moment, what that moment really solidified for me is that there's more hope now than ever before that we can create big systemic changes that close our gaps and our disparities. And we can give each and every student, every single day, a world-class education. So I thought that was um, really well said by her and, and really just um, encapsulates all of the work that everybody's had to do in the last year. So um, she did say that MDE will start scheduling regional service cooperative meetings to start talking about fall and what that might look like. Um, legislative update quickly, we've made some, uh, alluded to that a bit this evening, but both the House and Senate have passed their respective education omnibus bills. House confirm, conferees have been named. They have just named the Senate conferees. Um, Senators Chamberlain, Ikorn, Duckworth, Dorneck and Weiger. So those conferees will get together and uh, hammer out the final omnibus bill of which there's many elements that we, we are, um, are looking to see first and foremost, that two percent and two percent on the formula. So um, the work of your board Legislative Action Committee now has been pushing that the education targets are high enough to support some of the things that, that we know we need in terms of two percent and two percent on the formula of four hundred million dollars. Uh, Special Education Cross Subsidy and a number of other things that, that really will um, significantly impact our general fund budget. So that's the work um, going on um, right now with, with both C MSBA um, and local Legislative Action Committees to communicate with our legislators. Um, some very important days ahead. Uh, Legislative Session as a reminder is scheduled to end May seventeenth, but we'll see if that actually. So if there's any questions or comments, that's all things legislative. Okay. So with that, we can move on to the consent grouping. Um, as a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of the approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on for items for individual action. We just have one this evening and that's policy approval. First reading of those policies was um, at our first board meeting in April. Is there a motion to approve Policies Four Thirty and Four Thirty-Six and to sunset Policy Four Thirty-Nine? Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Tom. Any questions or comments on the uh, changes to Four Thirty, Four Thirty-Six or sunsetting Four Thirty-Nine? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's it for items for individual action. We'll turn over again to Dr. Hillman. Some items for information, beginning with National Teacher Appreciation Week.
So this year, uh, National Teacher Appreciation Week is May second through the eighth. And Teacher Appreciation Week, as it says in the information, is celebrated the first week in May. And it's our chance to say thank you to those who uh, have played or have played such a huge role in our students' lives. Official Teacher Appreciation Day is Tuesday, May fifth. And recognizing dedicated educators across the country and the state and our district for the lasting contributions that they make to our lives. Now, what I, what I would just encourage board members to do is not only with the teachers who, you know, we have here in the district, but thinking about those teachers who have played a role in either your life or your children's lives and saying thank you. I think sometimes we think that, you know, we gotta give some food and of course, we always love food, but it's a little different with COVID. But what I will tell you is one of the most valuable things to educators is when a former student or a former parent uh, or a parent of a former student comes back and thanks them for the work that they do so often in teaching. You are not able to see the outcome of your work in the moment. You can see some things in the moment, but it's about how we are preparing people for lifelong success. That's our vision, right? And so I encourage board members and I encourage people in the community to take a, say, some time during that week just to send a short thank you. And I will tell you, those are the kinds of things that give people the fuel to be able to keep going forward because they know they have made a difference. So while food and all that kind of stuff is always appreciated, those heartfelt handwritten notes are so valuable. So I encourage you to think about either teachers who are in the district who have made a difference for your family, or maybe it's last year, I did a series of pieces where I reflected on my high school teachers and and wrote some notes about saying this was, these people were great and they were, they were why I am where I am today in a lot of ways. So for people in the community looking, what can they do to appreciate teachers? Send them a note, thank them. And make sure that you, they know that they made a difference for you or for your family. That's National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Okay. We'll move on then. If there are no questions, we'll move on to Board Packet Format.
Yes. So starting with the next board meeting, for the most part, you're going to receive your board packet via a Google folder. And so we are going to experiment with this. We've looked at a number of different, we are still gonna, there's still gonna be a couple of printed pieces, but in general, um, we've offered you to have the uh, laptop if you would so choose. And we're going to start sharing, this is going to be an experiment. We're going to do, we've got a plan. We've talked to a number of different school districts about how they share their packets. We think that we can make them more usable for those of you who use them in the electronic format. And uh, we think they're going to be simpler for you to use rather than just a single PDF. So we'll be moving to that. We'll be seeking, we believe in continuous improvement, you might understand. So we'll be asking for your feedback as we move ahead. We'll still produce the general PDF that's posted to the website. Um, so people can get it all in one location. That may change at some point too, but Anita has done a great job of looking at what have districts who have done this successfully, how have they done it? And our goal is to do it without purchasing additional software. There's a lot of other, there's some software you can purchase. As we've reviewed the software, we're, we're not convinced that it is something that is superior to just doing a shared Google Drive folder. So uh, we've got some ideas. We're going to give it a shot and I, we know it, we, we know it's going to be successful. It's going to look different a few months down the line than it does to begin with here. And that's because we're going to need your feedback to make it the best experience for you that we can. Did I say all of that correctly, Anita? All right. Excellent.
Any questions or comments? I know that both uh, Dr. Hillman and Anita will work individually with each of us to be sure we're comfortable with the new format. Okay. Um, graduation update.
Yes. So just wanted to again, uh, reiterate that uh, the graduation ceremony for the Area Learning Center, of course, it's going to be a little bit different this year as well. It's going to be on Thursday, January third. And it's going to be uh, in the green space on the east side of this building. So if you, uh, as you leave, it's going to be to the right as you would go down Second Street. And so what we're doing with these, all of these outside events is we are first of all, calculating the square footage of the area that uh, we are going to hold the event in. And then we use the Department of Health Venue Calculator. There's a calculator that you can go on and say, is it a seated event? Is it a non-seated, is it a standing event? What's the amount of space that you have in it? It will tell you how many people uh, can be in a location. So we have enough space in that green space on this campus uh, for them to be able to have an outdoor graduation on June third. Uh, there will be a rain date. We just don't have that identified quite yet. And then Northfield High School's graduation again is scheduled as one ceremony at this point at two P M on Sunday, June sixth on Memorial Field. If we have inclement weather, we are going to move it to Monday at six thirty P M. Principal Lear has been communicating this with families. At this point, we believe based on the calculations that we currently have, that we can do this in one ceremony, we're still determining what that means for support personnel and board members and all the other people that go to graduation. We're still doing some final, we don't exactly always know how many people are going to graduate until just a few weeks ahead of time. So our intent would be to have you participate as normal. But I just need to share, it's, it's a possibility that it may have to be adjusted this year that we're going to do everything that we can to be able to do that. You know, families are going to be limited in the number of tickets that they can have. So we just want to make sure that we're looking, and I've also learned, who knows, the guidance could change between now and then as well. But based on the guidance we have today, we believe we can pull this off in one ceremony. It's going to look very different than it normally does. A lot of the football field is going to be used as opposed to a small part of it. And again, our goal is to be able to get as many people there as possible, including people uh, from the board, but we're still finalizing and it's, that part is we want to, we're going to make sure that we get the right amount of people uh, in the stadium. And again, then making sure that we're emphasizing trying to, to get as many families uh, can, who can be there at the same time. We will be streaming it, so you can still watch it. You'll be able to watch it live um, on, most likely on I guess Zoom actually is probably how we'll do it. So Zoom or YouTube, it'll be, it'll be streamed. We're just, which tool we use yet, we're not sure. So working through that. But that's the graduation update.
Um, quick question about kindergarten, fifth grade, eighth grade graduations, some of those things.
Yeah. So we are working through that same exact piece. We're calculating and, and advising where people can have those events. So uh, the fifth, really it's the fifth grade graduation. We typically have not done the same kind of thing with a kindergarten graduation, but a fifth grade graduation. What is looking right now is that most people are trying to work through if we can do one classroom at a time rather than have on all the groups together. Those items are still being finalized. And we are looking at a variety of different options there. In some cases, in those case, we might actually be able to hold those indoors because it's, but again, we're looking what is important to each uh, individual school and what is most important to their fifth grade class. We're also working on our preschool graduation, which again, is intended to be outside, using a calculation tool that I mentioned before.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other, any questions or comments?
Corey? What about board involvement for the ALC graduation?
Yeah. So typically, uh, board members aren't specifically involved in the Area Learning Center graduation, but it is one of the most, you're certainly a lot, uh, encouraged to attend. But the board doesn't have a formal role in the Area Learning Center graduation. Um, I encourage you to attend if you are able. Uh, it is, that is a piece where I think we will have enough room for everybody. Not everybody always comes and that's perfectly fine. Um, as you know, the Area Learning Center is one of my favorite events of the year, the ALC graduation because of the personal nature of the program. Uh, people speak about uh, each student and it's very heartwarming. So if you've not ever attended one, uh, it's something that would be very good to do so. Good question, Corey.
That's a great question. Thank you, Corey. So we can segue into senior ceremony.
Yes. So the senior ceremony, this is a latest, right, hot, hot off the presses from the high school that so when we're talking about the senior ceremony, we're typically talking about the awards night, if you recall. So the awards night is going to be a, and a lot of times it also includes juniors. This year it's going to only be seniors. And it's going to be held on May twelfth at six thirty P M. It's going to be a combination of the awards and academic awards, national merit recognition, um, scholarships and the Maroon and Gold Sports Awards. So they're going to be combining it all into one so that we can have people at one location at one point. Um, and again, it's going to be restricted to seniors and award presenters only. So I am still waiting, I didn't see a location for that yet, Anita. Have you, so they've got the date, um, still finalizing the location for that.
Excellent. Thank you. So those are the items for information. We can move on to future meetings. Um, two meetings in May, Monday, May tenth and Monday, May twenty-fourth at seven P M. Those are regular board meetings and they are held here in our District Office Boardroom. So with that, thank you everyone for a great meeting and excellent discussion tonight. So with that, I asked for a motion to adjourn. We are moved to adjourn by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.